Okay, at six o'clock, I call this meeting to order in a motion to approve the agenda.
I summon.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Let's all stand up, say pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have public comments.
I'm Eric.
Jacob, this is Jan Norris, I'd like to speak.
Okay, Jan, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, I am Jan Norris from just over the border in Montgomery County, and I have another commitment tonight, so if it's okay, I would like to give my comments now rather than waiting for Marty's agenda item. Thank you for your time last week with my in-depth report. I know it was a lot of information, that is why I also shared it with each of you along with resources noted. Please let me know if you did not receive it. First, I wanted to give you an update with new information. The total of Summit's unpaid invoices for county inspection costs is now up to seventy-eight thousand dollars in seven counties. This does not include Montgomery County because they don't consider their bills as late, but they have also submitted invoices for reimbursement. Just a reminder to please review who you intend to have as your county land restoration inspector. I believe you signed a non-binding letter of intent early on with the Summit recommended ISG. However, many counties have thought it prudent to use an independent inspector. Some are using Iowa-based Snyder and Associates. Last week, you said you haven't been told by the county engineer about road crossing permits or their fee structure, and he had left by the time it was brought up. So if you still have not had that conversation, perhaps you could ask him this evening during his update. Just for your information, some counties are establishing a significant fee structure. For instance, Immaculate County has a five thousand dollar road crossing fee and a one thousand dollar annual renewal fee along with a twenty-five hundred dollar permit review fee. My report contained an update of the information I received from Shelby County about the status of their case. Attorneys are working on briefs due in March for the appeals case with a panel of twelve, of three judges, but a final ruling could take up to twelve months. Last week, you left things with Jacob saying he would contact his colleague in Shelby County. Has that contact been made? I would like to know if you were told something different than I reported because it is always important to me to have the most accurate information. Again, this evening, I urge you to be proactive and please act now to preserve Page County and Shenandoah's future development and safeguard it from the impacts of multiple hazardous liquid pipelines. Your reluctance to open yourself to additional litigation is understandable, and Summit knows that and is using it as intimidation to get what they want. Setting the precedent of not pursuing policy for the county that you know is best for its citizens due to threats of lawsuits provides a roadmap for any other company in the future to do the same. I hope you can appreciate the limited opportunity you have today. There is a small window to enact a hazardous liquid pipeline ordinance now, but there is urgency. As county attorney Colin Johnson advised the Crawford County supervisors, quote, "If the IUB were to issue a permit for Summit to build, it would likely be too late to enact an ordinance," end quote. Please do not let Page County miss the opportunity to preserve your future growth. Thank you.
Okay. I have not heard or talked to the supervisor in Shelby County yet on that, so. Plan to, but have not. Last, last we talked, let's see if that's changed what he said, so. Anything else? I mean, I've got a comment? If not, we'll go to the engineer update.
Good evening, it's a fine windy evening in Page County. It's particularly fine because we poured the last of our substructure concrete at the bridge, but let me get to the engineer update. We are cutting trees and brush in the country at various locations. We are not burning. There's a burn ban on. And next week, if our plan works, we're gonna start cutting some, cutting some edges on, on the gravels, and we'll be putting some spot rock on next week. Various things going on at the shop. We were taking number five, which is a trade-in for the cat motor grader back. They let us have it, let it remain here for the month of February since we're still short of a machine. And the two superintendents and our sign man went down to the Altech factory in St. Joe to look at a sign truck body. It was a very productive trip in their mind, and we'll hear back about an order. It's, it's a year and a half out, so I want to work like a pre-order before. Well, it won't come in fiscal year twenty-five. The next items on my update are contract agenda items. I'll skip that and go on down to the bridge. Construction is doing, doing well with the good weather. We drove pile last week. They did pour both abutment caps this week, and perhaps next week they'll be setting the other beams. So we have yet to set beams, and then we'll be out of the water. So the. We also had some cores cut on J fifty-three to help us with planning that project. Questions about the update? And, and I could comment to Ms. Norris that we do not charge, currently, we do not charge fees for road crossings or for work done in the right way. The crossings that are, in my mind, most similar to the pipeline crossing is a tile crossing. And from one side, when there's tile on both sides of the road, farmers can connect their tile. We don't, we don't have a fee for that. That doesn't mean that couldn't be changed. But that's the current, current situation. If, if you could turn your attention to the, the next, the next items associated with the contracts, we have a, a contract for. The DOT put up a contract for the Manass job, the J fifty-five and Teak Avenue. Contract amount is a million, two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. They're low. So I'd recommend you award a contract to Manass for the J fifty-five job.
Okay, will we look that over? That's the J fifty-five.
We didn't grant it last week, so I would move that we accept the, the bid from Manass for one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, fifteen cents.
I'll second on that.
I'll second that.
All right, on the second, for discussion, this is for J fifty-five, East of Brattleville this summer.
Yes.
To the county line.
Correct.
That's what we're talking about? Okay, go ahead.
Mayor.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Okay, we'll sign that.
So Resolution twenty dash twenty twenty-four is a, is a digital signing delegation resolution that's, we've used for the past several years. It's the same job, authorizing, you're authorized and me given that the contract was awarded to sign it on, online.
Is this to start or to finish, or all?
Start.
To start, okay. Is it before they're done, or before the last money goes out?
Right.
We want to look at it to make sure it doesn't have the bumps in it.
Right, we've, we've talked about that among our.
Yeah, okay.
One ourselves.
So this is to start the project, a resolution that's.
It deals with the contract. You make a motion that we approve the Resolution twenty dash twenty twenty-four?
Okay, got a motion and second.
I'll second it.
Second, that's to give the engineer the authority to digitally sign that.
Right, and I need this, I need this signed.
Yep, okay, so that's what we're talking about, vote none, air discussion? Vote, please.
Mayor.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Clark.
Okay, so now, okay.
And then I'll move that we accept Resolution twenty-one twenty-four, allowing the engineer to sign digitally for the project on J fifty-three.
We just got our numbers, you mixed your numbers up, I actually have them. Yeah, we were talking about signing, and that was actually twenty-one. Resolution twenty-one.
This one is.
Right, well, JD was talking about signing, and you're talking with the Rock Hall, that's the, that's actually, does that say twenty or twenty-one?
That's twenty-one.
Okay.
That's the only, I just.
Twenty.
Should be.
Twenty is Manass, twenty-one is this one, yeah, yes.
All right, we just.
Twenty is twenty-one.
Okay, so we just, I see.
We haven't done Manass, we did Manass.
We did Manass, now we're the next one.
With Shieldburg.
Twenty.
Manass is twenty, and then this one is twenty-one.
Yep.
Yes, now we're doing Shieldburg's Rock Hall.
Yeah.
Twenty-one, the contract. Okay, Judy made a motion for twenty-one, which is the Shieldburgs, or no.
Yep, Shieldburgs.
Digitally signing that. All right, so another digital signature on a different.
Jacob, could you award the contract to Shieldburg first?
We just did.
Do we need to approve the bid?
That's what's confusing.
The only bid, yeah.
I thought we did that.
We were talking about digitally signing, so. The word, the bid, we just go for the bid. The bid's for four hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars. The Shieldburg, that is for the farm-to-market Rock Hall.
Correct.
Now, we have some confusion here, because we're talking about digitally signing things. So that, actually awarding that contract, we got, we were talking about digitally signing, and then we have contracts that were, so we kind of got confused there. That is Resolution twenty, right? Is that correct? Which we just did, but I kept talking about, I thought we were.
Twenty-one, this is twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Shieldburg was twenty-one, but you made the motion.
I made the motion for twenty, so we seconded, got that one done, now we're doing this one.
Now, you made the motion for Manass, just now.
The first one, I didn't.
The second one.
No, I didn't do the second one.
Sorry, I thought you just did it.
Nope, sorry, nope, we haven't done.
Okay.
But, but I will make the motion that we approve the bid for Shieldburger for four hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
All right, that's the farm-to-market Rock Hall, whatever resolution that is.
Yes.
Got it? Okay, so that's, that's, okay, Todd made the motion, Judy made a second, we'll vote on awarding the bid to them, that, for hauling the rocks.
Mayor.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so they.
Now, I'll, I'll move, we accept Resolution twenty-one twenty-four for the engineer to digitally sign the bid from Shieldburg.
Yes, okay, Judy's made that motion.
I will second.
Second to digitally sign that motion, the Rock Hall we just passed, all right, vote on that. Clear, bud.
I'm just trying to hurry through because.
Yeah, we have to do three, we have to digitally sign and pass a, digitally, pass digitally sign for each one.
Digitally signing it?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we've done both steps to both of those projects.
Yes.
Then we have a utility permit, too.
Need to sign.
Okay. We all need to sign this?
Yeah. There's spaces for it to be signed.
Yeah, but some.
I said J fifty-five, we've done this summer, J fifty-three is scheduled next summer.
Yes, they, yeah, twenty-five.
That's Rock Hall. Various, various farm-to-market roads. You want to know, stop by the office, I have a map. The final agenda item thing for engineer is a bore underneath Rose Avenue, south of Sham Ball. There's a homestead on the east side of the road setback, and naturally, the connecting comm line is on the west side of Rose Avenue, so they're boring under Rose into the, into the homestead.
Okay, understand that.
You're supposed to sign these.
Phone internet in there?
Yep.
So needed a motion on that permit for Windstream to bore under the road.
I'll make a motion to approve Windstream boring under the Rose Avenue.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second, air discussion on that? Done? If not, we'll vote on.
Mayor.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, have that permit, sign that.
Okay. Now, the next item is number six.
Yes, okay, so you're cutting brush. What have you figured out on that? On treating brush?
The county crews are instructed to cut, cut brush and spray afterwards. I, I did find a little more information out. When we use pathway that has dye, when we use Pathfinder, Pathfinder does not have a dye, and it's clear.
So they were always.
It may, that may have been what you had seen. Now, it's our, certainly our intention to spray everything.
It is being sprayed right now.
Yes.
That's our instructions to our guy. Is there any difference in price or with the?
I don't know, they've got, they pick up both.
I, I've been spraying brush, I'm working on right-of-way right now on farm I'm working on, and it's a mess. And they apparently cleared this, I don't know how many years ago, they didn't treat it. And so every single stump has.
Multiple sprigs.
Yeah, and it's very hard to get rid of. And I think we, you can buy blue pond dye anywhere and dump a little bit in your pathway if you want, so you can see, because when I'm spraying stuff, it's hard to know which ones you've done if you don't have a dye in there.
Okay.
A little drop of that would die at all. I, I don't know, it is the policy. I want to make, because I get calls on this, and I, and I'm seeing it firsthand in my own farm, in the right-of-way. Every single stump gets treated that day that's cut, I mean, to your best ability, I mean, you're trying.
Needs to be, it needs to be done right away.
That day, and I, I have the, I have the, oh, on remedy and on toward on everything, they're labeled here, I printed, and goes through, unless there's snow covering them, in the winter, it doesn't matter, you can treat the stumps, and the outer edge is what matters, but that. There's several places in the county that in the last few years, brush has been cleared, and the brush is right back. So I don't know if it's not working or what, but I mean, we talked about this last couple of years, this is something I'm really serious about, I imagine we all are. Every day, that's as important as sawing it down, that has got to be treated.
Yes.
And, and put a dye in there so people can see it's been treated.
Okay.
Blue dye, just buy some blue pond dye.
And, and at the beginning of February, we bought some fifteen gallons of spray from AgriVision, and it's time to get more, they tell me, so.
Okay.
It's certainly our intention.
And the other policy that could be added here, and maybe they're doing this, is whatever survives this, I mean, if something does survive, if they would go back with a little pump-up spray, anything, to these areas, they did during the winter, and with remedy or something like that, hit those shoots we would end this, and not have to come back probably ever again. So maybe a second pass, a year later, come back and see what survived.
My weed commission is gonna do.
Yeah, well, we need one of them, but, but this, these aren't giant areas, where they're working, whoever's there, somebody, the brush is, it's such a bunch of resources we spend getting rid of brush, and they're right back. Like I said, I'm dealing with it myself in the right-of-way.
Okay.
So that's our, so I mean, so on the policy, there needs to be a plan to come back. If we don't have a weed commissioner, I want somebody to come back and check it, too, to make sure the brush is being dealt with. What do you guys think on that?
Yeah, I think it needs to be dyed, and then, just so people can see it, and, and you, as you're doing it, you know what it got, and what you have in.
And I want a follow-up pass, say in August, that'd be the best time, July and August, trees are taking stuff in, you can spray folio. A follow-up pass on that. I don't care if we put a resolution together, I want to make sure that's getting done. Okay?
Anything else for me?
All right, well, let's see.
Just work on a weed commissioner.
Yeah, we need a weed commissioner. Yeah, go ahead.
Do you want to come up to the microphone?
I've sprayed a lot of stumps in my time. It can travel.
Right, remedy can, I can move.
Leaves down, and, and with the water get carried down, if there's a house nearby or a yard nearby, you might turn some ground that's gonna be dead for four or five years, so.
Follow the label.
Yeah, well, be careful if you get it, so it doesn't travel off your road.
Yeah, right. So. Put together, like I called it, put together where our policy is, that's what I see it as, what we're doing, and make sure we're following it to the label, that we're not hurting anybody off the right-of-way, but it's been a brush coming back every year. Okay, we got anything else on that? The next item, number seven, is the CO2 pipeline, Marty's here.
Good evening. I, after being here last week, I had some thoughts about what was said and such, and I wanted to share a little bit more information with you. I had asked about a fee that Page County charges a utility if they wanted to dig through one of the county roads or just through county property, and JD has talked about it, and so did Jan, and as said, currently, there are no fees for them to go through. I've seen what happens when a farmer tiles through the road to drain their farm, and they saw the tile out that, you know, you've got a rut, you might be a foot wide or so, maybe eight, ten inches wide. Yeah, you can pack it, you can do what you want to, if it's gonna settle, it's gonna take a load of gravel to fix it. When this pipeline goes through, what I've been told, it's gonna be a much wider cut than what we use for a field time. And consequently, that, the fees that Jan talked about are quite appropriate because you could have a major issue on your hand if the road settles, and they go through, and somebody comes along too fast and hits that and has an accident. So the fees she was talking about are appropriate because those, those cuts that they make are a lot bigger than we do with field time. And besides, why should a billionaire corporation during the digging not bear the cost of the repair and repairing the damage? I'd urge you to set a fee for the crossings and do it soon. You only got sued for that, so you won't, but it might help pay for a few county items and or repair if need be. I wanted to congratulate you folks on the possibility of pursuing an ordinance for solar fields. That's a very proactive measure that you should pursue. They seem to be popping up in many locations, and to protect the citizens of Page County, you should take action now. But with that said, where is the urgency about preparing an ordinance for a hazardous CO2 pipeline? Like I said last week, BEMSA on September the ninth, nine twenty twenty-three, told Summit Carbon Navigator and Wolf Pipelines companies that state and local governments, quote, "Have the powers, broad powers, to regulate land use, including setback distances and property development within the vicinity of the pipeline." Nothing in the federal pipeline safety law impinges on these traditional prerogatives of local or state government, end quote. Page County, along with a few other counties, is being bullied by Summit Carbon with the phrase, "We will sue you." Many counties have stepped up to the plate and said to the bully that we will set up a buffer zone since you have no regard for our future development or our residents. It was mentioned last week that you were worried about being sued by every farmer's friend, the savior of ethanol, Summit Carbon Solutions. I asked if your attorney, your attorney had given you an opinion about existing ordinances being adequate. You had not, Mary, you didn't recall or whatever, and so I assume you were going to pursue and find out if they have an opinion on that. If they do, that's great. You're in the driver's seat, Summit Carbon can't sue you as your ordinances were in place before they filed with the IUB for a pipeline permit. But if the current ordinances are not adequate, you can formulate a pipeline ordinance and not be sued. Iowa is a test case for CO2 pipeline ordinances. Should they run roughshod over the counties of Iowa, it will happen all over the nation in a few years. The more counties that stick together, the better statement that makes to the state legislatures and to the courts. After formulating a pipeline ordinance, you could fine-tune it, and you would not be sued. You could present your ordinance at the first reading and not be sued. You could have the second reading of a pipeline ordinance and not be sued. Remember, you might have a hazardous pipeline on the southwest or north side of Plorinda someday. That might get your attention. But anyway, at this point, you have, at that point, you have the luxury of doing absolutely nothing about CO2 pipelines until it's all settled and approved at the third reading and not be sued. At that point, you're looking to the future to protect Page County citizens and future development, just like a solar ordinance. Or you can wait until the Shelby County case is heard. I understand this week, until a decision is rendered, it may be six or seven months before any decision is rendered in that case. In the meantime, the IUB make it, may make a decision this spring, and those counties that have no buffer zone ordinances will be out of luck. Now, I don't know which is going to come first, whether the courts will act or whether the IUB will act. A third option, there might be a sliver of opportunity to approve a third reading of a pipeline ordinance and not get sued, depending on the courts and the IUB, but I can't foretell the future. Or you could take a stand with the other brave counties that are working to help their citizens and future development of their county, and approve the ordinance at a third reading. This will not stop the pipeline, like Summit Carbon says, it will only protect Page County. One thing is certain, though, if you do not lay the groundwork now, absolutely no good will come of this mess. Doing nothing allows your citizens to be run over like an insect on the hive. You saw this position as county supervisor, I presume, to respect citizens' rights in Page County, to stand up when it's tough, and to do the right thing no matter what. If you look at the charts that Jan and I gave you last week, allowing part of your county to be put in a kill zone by a bully corporation should not be a hard call to figure out a course of action. Please move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Well, on moving forward, you know, we've talked about that over the last, on and off over the last year or two. We can put something together, which we have kind of looked into that, but then we can't, we can pass it. We've been instructed that that's not. We don't, we don't know if we have that right or not, so we can take a second reading, I see that, we could try, that's what most we could do, I mean, we don't necessarily have the for-sure fix to this, we don't have the for-sure answer. If the state doesn't allow us, we're kind of in a limbo, and I need to, the last, the last I was advised by Shelby County was wait and see what happens with us. But I get what you're saying, nobody wants to put anybody in a kill zone, I understand that, no one, none of us on here want to do that. So wind and solar, we have the, the known ability to write ordinances on those topics, those issues. This is an area that they're arguing about. Whether or not we have that right or as a board, so that's where the big argument is.
One of my main points was I haven't heard that you have formulated any sort of an ordinance. I haven't heard that you think you need one, and it would be very beneficial if you had one written, you had fine-tuned it, you had, had the first reading and the second reading, so that you would be, shall we say, nimble in your ability to act on fairly quick notice and have a third reading and approve it if the situation presents it. But from where, what I see, I don't think you're any ways. But from where, what I see, I don't think you're anyways spokes to having something formulated. Uh, have a first reading or a second reading.
No, as we started this, and this has happened over several different things, and there's been different lawsuits, different things have happened, and. And I can't remember what order they all happened, but it's told us we can't go for it, and then we can, and then we can't, and then so. We, we looked into retaining Tim Whipple back, we did.
Yep, and we talked to him and.
A year ago or more.
He had advised us later on, after the Shelby County thing had happened, to wait and. What kind of stopped our momentum.
Yeah.
On anything going forward, because we, we kind of gotten that from legal counsel. That, yeah, this is probably something that we want to wait and see what happens.
Cause they're fighting this. Right, totally, and so if, if they, they're gonna win, if we have the right, and if they don't win, then we don't have, I mean. So that's, it's my memory where this kind of slowed down.
And I do, you know, we, or I'll, I'll speak for myself, I won't speak for the other, um, Mr. Holmes and Mrs. Clark. But I would say, you know, we all do not want people to be in danger, Page County citizens. You know, and I, I do hold that as one of your. One of our duties as supervisors, you know, I, I hold that really in high regard. To, as one of the obligations that I have in this role, so, you know, if there. Is a way, you know, to move forward and we can get some. You know, where, you know, legal says it's okay, or we can. Things in Shelby County are looking favorable, then by all means, I definitely think we have to have an ordinance, I mean, we need to have something. And but, yeah.
And the fees for tearing up the road, if they're gonna tear the road up, we need to fix the road, we don't need to let them tear up the road up and not. Make us go out there and spend money, we could be putting somewhere else on that, I totally agree with that. I, so, yeah, so nobody wants to go get hurt, I'm not against an ordinance to make sure this is done right at all. It's an awkward situation with the normal ordinance procedures, it's, it's awkward, we're trying to figure that out, with Shelby County is going. Front, out front, right, Steve Cankles leading that to. Figure out whether or not we can, because they sued, same again, so I, wherever, I need to go back, we need to. Revisit this, but the council that I remember is exactly what you said, that.
Right, yes, it was, it was the, the legal.
Right.
The attorney that said, don't do it.
Who is fighting for Shelby County.
Yeah, so that's why we were, why we're waiting, and that's not to say we don't care.
And I do agree, there's no, no amount of, somebody saying, I'm gonna, some salesman or some whoever saying, I'm gonna sue you. There's no reason to stop doing what's right, let them sue you, do what's right. Cause then a threat of any, anybody could threaten to guide us whichever way they want by a threat of a lawsuit, that's wrong. So I, I agree with that, it's not under a threat of a lawsuit, it's under.
A legal opinion.
Somebody else is fighting this, the person we would hire to help us is advising us to. Wait, now, we can revisit that and see if it's changed.
I don't understand why he would say that, um, on one hand, I do. But on the other hand, if the I U B comes down and grants the eminent domain. It would only, um, uh, the counties that wouldn't be subject to eminent domain. If the lawsuit succeeds are the counties that have an ordinance in place.
Is that, I mean, you certain of that?
No, I'm not certain of that.
Cause that, cause some of the things, not in this.
I'm not certain of that, but that's a very real possibility.
You might be grandfathered in. There are some other things with other issues similar to this, that I've seen the state do things that goes back and just wipes out. Everything the counties have passed and everything they, they just take this broad, y'all gotta do it, I don't think, so they could go either way. I see what you're saying, though.
I look at Montgomery County, and if Montgomery County had had the fortitude to go ahead and pass their ordinance a year ago. Uh, they would probably have been sued by Summit Carbon. However, they would have their ordinance in place before this new pipeline that's coming from the east and crossing their county.
Right.
And they, they had that ordinance would have protected them. In that latest, latest, uh, attempt to build a pipeline. So they, they did it, and to avoid being sued. But now they got another pipeline coming in that if they had their ordinance in place, it would have an effect on that. So, uh, there's many different ways to look at it. I just wanted you folks to be nimble, to be able to be nimble. And if you don't have anything ready, I mean. I talked to the state legislator and Dave C. in Fremont Mills County. Dave said, you know, uh, when the Bakken pipeline went through, that's the one that goes from northwest Iowa to southeast Iowa. He said, there was all sorts of people talking about the eminent domain used for that, so on and so forth. And as soon as the pipeline was in, then it died, and so we didn't do anything. Okay, they didn't do anything then, so now they have another pipeline. And they won't do anything now if we don't push them. So this is a case of letting them dither while an issue goes on, and then quickly forgetting about it. And never doing anything, which I think Page County ought to do something, even if, uh. We get the I U B and we have to use eminent domain, they should have a, an ordinance to protect the county going forward. Just like your solar is going forward, you're looking forward to the future, so. I think in that respect, it's appropriate for you to have it, whether you pass it before or, or not.
Right, there was thought, it will, I mean, to pass an ordinance that does what's right, the cost is fine, we will spend the money to do it, it's the right thing to do, but. If we spend a bunch of money to do the ordinance, that, and our legal counsel's telling us this might not even be anything you can even go forward with. It's trying to get the go ahead on investing in this. When we have the right to do it, I don't, I need to reach out and study this again, but that's where it went, we. It, press there and talk about, doesn't cost the county anything, but if we go to publishing and doing things, and legal, all the legal bills to write. Cause we have to have him come in and go through our, our, uh.
Your resolutions, your ordinances.
And, and, uh, I'm trying to think what that is, our plan, what's it called, our. The county has a plan that.
The zoning ordinance.
Yeah, the zoning ordinance, they, they have to go take and see how that applies, because we have rules in place for some things, they have to all mesh together. And he has to go over what we have and then, um. Go over that, so we need to go back, we can bring him, we can put him on the phone if you want, maybe he has time to call, we can ask him questions on, in a meeting or something, but.
I would suggest we have Carl talk to him maybe and, and see where. You know, have our county attorney talk with him and see, unless you want to call him Jacob, or both, both of you maybe.
We, we could just.
And talk to him and see where he feels that things are standing right now.
So we get an update on that, that's fine, that's maybe what I do, that's. See if anything's changed, so we can do that, we're not, I'm not, we're not trying to forget about what's going on here, it's trying to figure what we can do. In this situation, if Shelby County wins, then we know what we can do, we can put an order together, and whatever we agree on, pass it and move on.
Might I suggest that it would be a good idea to have him look over your ordinance as it is. Beings is that you let a, um, wind farm come into Page County. Or you didn't, but somebody let a wind farm come into Page County, and when I read the ordinance, it looked like that wind farm violated some of your ordinances. So I think maybe it's appropriate to have your ordinances reviewed regardless of what you do. Cause I'm not so sure your ordinances are going to carry much weight at this point.
We'll try and review that, thanks for bringing the information in. Okay. All right, next up, Resolution sixty-one, declaring emergency medical services an essential service in Page County. We have. Previous two meetings passed this resolution, this will allow this to be on the ballot. People to decide if they want to levy money to go into the emergency. To declare emergency medical services essential, and that they want to levy money to fund that, so. So we've done it twice now, this will be the third time, this will pass up to.
I'll make a motion for the third reading for the Resolution sixty-one dash two zero two three, uh, declaring emergency medical services. An essential service in Page County.
And sign it, I'll second that.
Now, if we can sign it tonight, in third time, in seconds, so. Again, this is to put it on the ballot, the people will decide whether or not this money is levied. For this service. This November. So we have motion of second, you have exception on that, I understand. If not, we'll vote.
Mayor.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Park. Yes.
Okay. Sign that, it'll go on the ballot. Next up, we have. Library funding, we got additional library funding from the, uh, local option sales tax funds, what did we find?
I made the motion last week that we. Approve the six thousand fifty dollars additional library funding if we could find the, um. If we could find the money and, um. The auditor has said that there is six thousand fifty dollars in reserve funding that can, out of community betterment that can be used.
Okay, and that reserves, so every year, next year, what will happen? They have to relook at the.
We'll have a look at it.
It might not be there.
Well, you know, we have to change something else, yeah. So.
Okay, so there's savings underneath the community betterment, this, these funds are coming from the sales tax collected here in Page County. Forty percent of those have to be used for community betterment.
Right.
Yep.
So do you want me to make the motion again? We did it last week pending that we found it, so.
I guess make it with that in it, if you would like.
Okay, um, the motion last week to, was to approve. The additional six thousand fifty dollars for the Page County libraries for the FY twenty-five budget. Pending, we find the money, and the money has been found in the reserve funding for community betterment of the, the local option sales tax.
It's coming from that category, which is where it should, okay.
Yep, I'll second.
All right, the motion of second, the money's coming out of local option sales tax. And discussion. Hold on.
Mayor.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yeah.
Park. Yes.
What is the balance of the, uh? I don't know, and that funds held sheet, let's search, maybe next week, we'll see what the balances are on each one of those, just for our minds, so we can think about that in the future. Okay. All right, well, next. Next item up is a solar ordinance, starting to work on that. Time to print all those different ordinances, there Fremont, Mills, my credit to others.
Fremont and Mills are pretty much the same, I think Mills is a little more detailed, I was looking at them. And Todd was too, and then he looked at Montgomery also. I think they're all pretty much the same.
Yeah, I thought Montgomery and Mills were fairly similar.
Yeah.
The one, the two that I looked at, um. You know, there's a few things maybe we could discuss, whether, you know, but for the most part, their setbacks and everything are. Um, the same as far as. Having, uh, the. So a hundred feet from any occupied residence, unless the agreement grants a waiver.
A hundred feet?
Hundred feet, yeah.
Not very far. Hundred feet isn't, that's like from.
Three hundred feet from a residence that isn't part of.
Three hundred from a non, that's what.
Five hundred feet from any neighbor occupied property. Measured at the property line.
Okay. What is the difference, I sent, uh, from a. Not somebody who doesn't sign us from their home, the different ones, I've got. Compare these two.
Yeah, 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 good.
So I'll be back in November, we'll authority with Mid American Energy, um, I guess if you do have any questions, feel free to, to bounce them off me. Right now, um, as you guys kind of sift through this at all.
Did you, were you, uh, did you help Montgomery County with theirs, or?
We didn't help Montgomery County, no, we, um, we had, we were involved pretty heavily with Mills County.
Mills County.
Granted, though, that was taken up by, um, outside council.
Okay.
Who kind of specializes.
Fair and home.
Yeah, Fair and Home, who specializes in that, they, they do a lot of work across kind of Nebraska and the southwest Iowa area.
Okay.
Um, theirs is probably a little more rigorous, but I mean, you're gonna see discrepancies from all these ordinances.
Right.
You know, adjacent property lines, participant, non-participants, uh, residences, stuff like that, they, they tend to differ slightly from one another.
Fifteen feet tall.
I guess, I was reading about the, what noise do they produce?
So the noise they produce is, uh, comes from the inverters, so taking that DC current and make, turning it into AC current, and then. Chugging that back to the substation, putting it on the grid, um, the inverters though, so going to our, we have six solar sites throughout the state of Iowa. Um, our largest one, uh, is eight hundred acres in size, it's up by Fort Dodge, it's a hundred megawatt project. Um, all the inverters are internally placed within the project, so they're not on, on the exterior, so basically you have these fans basically to cool the inverters down. Uh, where you're turning it from that, that DC to AC, and so you put them on the interior side of the project to just basically create as much buffer. As you can from the exterior of the property all the way to neighboring adjacent parcels as well, so that would be the majority of the noise. Um, some folks claim that they hear the modules actually tracking, but, um, I've been on site with supervisors from Boom County and Webster County. Um, and I can quite honestly have a conversation like this when a module start tracking, it's very quiet, it's just an electric motor, it's chugged down pretty low, so.
I'm.
It's all from the inverters.
I read another ordinance here, this is forty decimal. Uh, max on that. On noise at the, at the people, non-participating people's property. Um.
Which, which one is that?
Madison, I printed Madison County's off.
Oh, okay, that, this Montgomery one says sixty decibels, uh, measured from the property line, of any, any neighboring parcel.
There's a noise complaint resolution for glare. Another issue, well, this has been a couple of years ago, I forget what county that supervisor's from, he was, Isaac was talking about, uh. Making sure if they walk away from it, you know, TVs are very hard to get rid of, you have to pay money to recycle them, they're very.
Oh, ID commission?
Yeah.
Lot under agreement or something like that.
That, that we make sure they don't down the road, walk away and hang us with a bunch of.
Yeah, and we have those in place in our solar facilities, we have them in place in our wind facilities as well, um, something we deal with pretty regularly. Some counties like to put that as like an additional requirement to the conditional use permit process, that, that has to be submitted on the front end as part of the application. Same with road use agreement as well.
You're with Mid American?
Yes, yeah.
So do they own most of the larger, the solar farms in the state?
Uh, there's, there's one over, I think, in Wapalo County, that's a little larger, that's not ours, I'm not sure who owns that one. Um, we do have some of the. We only have about a hundred and fifty-one megawatts right now, um, but there's not a lot throughout the state, it's still pretty new, which, I mean, to this gentleman's point, there's. There's a lot of projects coming down the pipeline in the state of Iowa in general.
Right.
Um, a lot of counties are starting to take this up right now because they see it coming, and it's a good thing to do, and so. Um, I think we're gonna see probably more and more solar projects being requested by counties and everything.
Well, we've got things like height, Zatmax, and decommissioning, just a few.
Are most of them around twenty foot tall?
So.
What's the?
So the, the. To answer your question, when they, when they tilt, that maximum tilt, they can reach up to that height, yeah.
Okay.
Potentially, because when you put the, the PVs, um, on the tracking systems, you can usually stack them too high. And, you know, advice that we've gotten from our engineering consultants in our operations team as well, you know, if. If we're able to continue to do that down the future, or, you know, be able to maximize the efficiency of the project as well. Um, there's two things at play there, there's the ground clearance below the panels to the physical ground. A lot of times that's in there for vegetation growth or for other reasons as well. Um, and then you have the maximum height, and so it's, it's trying to play with those two numbers, from our point of view, obviously, you can have your own, but from our point of view, to try to. Um, first of all, minimize grading, because the less grading we can do on site, the less stormwater issues we're gonna have, less erosion we'll have on site, all that kind of stuff. Um, so measuring from that, that maximum height to, you know, on the ground where it's at, potentially you have to do some grading to try to. Um, alleviate any discrepancies that would butt up against that regulation, um, and also a lot of the panels too are becoming bifacial. What that means is instead of having on the front side of the panels, you actually have them on the front and back, we have that in our Holiday Creek project up by Fort Dodge, and. It adds some efficiencies to the. It adds some efficiencies to the projects, um, you know, the, out of the total, total generation of the facility, I think it's around like twelve or seventeen percent. Is actually seen from the backend as the vegetation underneath reflects up sunlight from the ground. Um, but if we have, you know, certain height limitations on the top end that we needed here to, and then height restrictions on the bottom end as well. And this is where it kind of comes in with Mills County, they have certain requirement, requirements as well for like the vegetation.
Yeah.
Side of things, what can be underneath, uh, our vegetation scorecard.
Is that, is that part of your pro, like, when you go into a project, is, is the ground cover underneath part of your project, or?
Yeah, yep, correct, and so that's where the scorecard comes into play for like Mills County, um, and we've actually just kind of started going through that a little bit and. Um, they have requirements in there, and we can go to better detail, you know, if I, once I have the results back from that, but, um, trying to get to a point where it's adequate. On that scorecard to meet their requirements is proving to be slightly difficult, just because, um, even as we take out panels in the array. Um, it's going to, uh, decrease the amount of wildflowers underneath the arrays, and so that would actually, uh, be detrimental to us in the scorecard.
Right.
Um, and so we're actually having to pace, place those panels closer together, planning to plant, uh, wildflowers underneath those arrays. In order to maximize the amount of points, so it's, it's trying to build the regulation that, you know, suits both, um, what you guys have in plan. Would you like to see from the solar facility, um, as it pertains to residents, you know, as it pertains to any sort of pollinate, pollinators, vegetation management, that kind of stuff. But also trying to, um, from our perspective at least, we'd like to give you information on how that kind of, those numbers begin to. Effect what the project looks like, or any excessive grading that might need to take place, or anything like that, just so we can mitigate any issues on the backend.
What's the lifespan?
Uh, we have a model of thirty years.
Thirty years?
Thirty year assets, correct, yeah. You hear in the range of twenty to thirty, we have ours, uh, modeled at thirty.
But most of the time, they want to build these in the bottom, so they can, you know, on flat ground.
Yeah.
A lot of times, and or slightly slow.
Yeah, and the, the ground we have under option right now, I'm, it's, it's not flat, you know, um, I was actually just out there today. Driving around and, uh.
It's a, would build them in fairly flat grounds, some is fifteen, twenty foot tall. That's not hills, you hardly can see over these things, you'd be, if they were three hundred foot from your house.
Yeah, potentially, I mean.
Twenty foot tall, two stories, that's a, that's on all sides, I'm just, this would be maybe a rare instance, but.
Right.
Kind of think about that, I'm just trying to picture this, because I've not been in the middle of one of these.
Right, at full tilts, yeah.
At full tilt, yeah, he does something twenty, like a twenty foot black wall around you, basically, if you're in the bottom.
Yeah, but they're not full, yeah, I understand your point for sure, um. Twenty foot was a recommendation by us to Mills County, we have seen fifteen feet in a lot of counties as well.
Fifteen and fourteen seems to be what I, every, three I printed, that's what they all said.
Yep, yep, and the reason why I recommended twenty feet to Mills is because of, you know, the double stacking of PVs on a single tracker. Adds an additional height and allows us to kind of create the row spacing a little further apart, get more vegetation into the actual site itself, so you have less rock. You have less gravel, um, you have less piles in the ground, also less ground disturbance, you can just fit more PVs on a single tracking system. Um, so it's, it's a little more, a little less invasive from that standpoint, but also to your point, yeah, it does make them slightly taller, taller when they are fully tracked, but. The way they track from east to west, it'd be, you know, at the early parts of the morning, late parts of the night, and they'd flatten out in between until they. Pick up a iridescent signal from the sun.
They've got the personal solar. And then they have what they call utility scale.
Two different, because if they for their home, want to put up a solar panel.
And they've got fifteen feet on the, the personal one. And then twenty feet on the.
Who does?
The utility scale, this is Mills.
Mills does.
Yep, and I think Mills also makes it a little easier, I think it's, uh, maybe an accessory use.
Yeah.
As opposed to which, I mean, I would agree if you own the property, but that's obviously up to your discretion, um, just easier for main process as well. I don't know what a lot of those, uh, PVs are for like personal solar, you know, a lot of them are fixed arrays too. Um, I can try to get that information from you, I'm not really sure what fixed arrays really go up to for like a maximum height at all.
Mills names it something different than, than Fremont does, as far as the. Utility scale is what they use for the. The other one, the. Commercial, whatever, yeah. And they have a different name for it at Fremont.
Um, Montgomery County had utility. And then they also had community solar.
Community?
Yeah, community.
I didn't even look at theirs, so, which.
Yeah, and that's something that Mid American hasn't done much, community solar, um, I know Alliance Energy has. Um, there's also been in other states, some municipalities who have opted into doing solar projects such as that. So I think the point of that from the county's perspect- perspective is to try to bifurcate out larger solar projects from. That are utility from ones that might be owned by municipalities, or, you know, can, can glom, conglomerate groups of folks. Um, through like a community solar program or something like that to offset utility bills, basically.
If we would happen to do, I know it's been mentioned, uh, once the cell is closed out at the landfill. To put solar panels on top of that, Jacob.
Did you look into that? Uh, somebody's looked into that, maybe Brian looked into it.
I think it's Brian that mentioned it to me at one point.
Asked somebody and acted like there was no transmission lines to.
Yeah, and I, I talked to them a little bit about it, I tried calling them back in, uh, January, I wasn't able to get ahold of them, but, um. Yeah, I mean, that would, that would be a very specific use for, for their instances, um, I mean, they would probably have to, assuming they, they are delivered from an REC. They're electric, um, they'd probably have to go through the REC to see if there's any net metering rules in place with the REC at all. Um, because to your point, yeah, there's probably not any transmission out that way, um, and even if there was, it'd be a fairly rigorous process to go through to get that connected in the transmission grid.
Where the transmission lines are is where you want to build them.
Correct.
I mean, that's to sell it. Well, we have, we gotta, except setbacks, heights. Decommissioning, if they tear up the roads, that kind of stuff.
So do you guys want to compare some more and then talk about it again next week?
Yeah, and the one thing I, I think.
Setbacks, the all the different ones.
One of the counties I looked at said that, you know, they use their, their wind ordinance, road use agreement.
Same one.
Same one, and just used it for.
That max.
Yeah, we've seen that in a few counties too, and like I said, some of the counties require that on the front end, so you have to work, you know, they basically just stipulate that there has to be a road use agreement in place. For the county prior to any conditional use permit application.
Yep.
And so you have to work with the county engineer to get to a point where the county feels comfortable, um, that takes a lot of different forms, we've, we've done that with a lot of counties, we feel pretty comfortable with it. We have templates that we use, we have templates that counties use, we're really not too picky about it, um, it's something that we have a lot of experience with. But it's pretty universal and should be honestly included, you need to have a road use agreement.
The project that you're looking at north of Clarendon is three hundred acres?
It's, the amount of acres we have under option right now is four hundred and twelve. I believe. It's, I know it's over four hundred, I think it's, I think it's four hundred and twelve, it's gonna be a fifty megawatt project.
Fifty megawatt.
Is where it's proposed.
Four hundred fifty acres at the most.
We have four, we have four hundred acres under option, we. That would not be completely covered.
Oh, wouldn't, how many would you cover?
I mean, you'd have to have a buffer from fence line to the actual arrays, we don't have designs done yet, keep in mind, this is a twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven project, this is still fairly early. We're going through the MISO Q process right now, which is the transmission grid operator, that's tended to take quite a bit of time over the past few years with backlog of projects.
Through our ordinances, we can determine what the buffer should be, or what we'd like to see.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm right, and all that.
Yeah.
I, and maybe you had this last time, I can't remember, but maybe a map. Of where this, and, and then part of some of these orders I read was a, to let everybody know what's going on, like public notice, you're wanting to build a. Solar farm out here and everybody ought to know. If anybody has concern.
Yeah, there's been like a, a public, uh, public notice requirements and also like public median requirements prior to a conditional use application.
Application to the permit, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
But maybe, I mean, that's. Maybe we'll look, see where exactly this is and.
It's, it's, eh, it's just northeast of the, the prison.
Right, that's what I pictured in mind, but I don't know.
Just on the east side of that road.
You guys live out there.
Yeah, I was just out there, I was just out there with them today.
You mark it out, you see, you see where it is, and do the check button. Yeah.
In our neighborhood, this neighborhood, there's a shooting range going in next to these solar paths.
Yeah, for the prison. Yeah, if you, that's something that needs to be, communication needs to happen, because the. The prison has a shooting range, and that's something else that we're trying to. State has a shooting range, but it's down the bottom, flat ground.
Right, yeah, Keith, Keith just brought that to my attention.
Sounds real interesting.
Might be something to think about, you know.
Right, exactly.
It's a prison and safe place, and the sheriff's office, supposedly gonna use it. And then permit says, what is recreational?
Private recreational.
And I thought, well, if you're paid to go get free, just kind of see that as recreational, but.
So Keith, where is this in relation to the prison? Is it on the west side of it?
Yeah, east of the prison off of one sixty-fifth.
If you go out to Irwin Boo's house.
Yeah.
And reach either the north side. That's a hundred ninety-sixth street that goes east. You go half mile east, and it's from that fade road to Wall Street. All Irwin Boo's across the road from Peg Ody's, across the road from.
This is, that's the shooting range, are you talking about the shooting range?
Solar farm.
That, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the shooting range, sorry.
Shooting range.
Yeah.
That'd be from Irwin Boo's half mile east by the tracks.
So it's not on, on the side of the prison?
No, the prison can't see the ground.
Gotcha, okay.
State kept nine acres, there was a well down there that they thought they might use in the future for water sources. So they kept that because there's an excellent well down there. They've never used it. And they, the one in Clarendon closed shooting range. The guard says, well, we could build a shooting range. We're smart guys, and we can scoop dirt, pile it up and pile. They don't know what they're doing. We've got a map.
This is.
I, I.
Yeah.
And I told him.
Right here. Okay.
That'll be across the road.
Okay.
That's avenue goes through this corner today.
Right on here, solar panels.
So a hundred ninety-sixth and S.
Okay. So you don't have a problem with the solar panels, okay, okay. The shooting range there.
You can show the other guys here where it is.
Yeah.
Where they had told us that this shooting range was gonna be, basically, they're gonna be shooting towards the solar panels.
Towards the solar patch.
And with the shooting range. There's no, they're, they're gonna have a fence, it's gonna be a way.
It's got a road right next to the shooting range, two hills sides.
What, what's preventing people from coming out and shooting at the, at the. Burr whenever it gets done, and, oh, well, we got some panels over here.
I will say, regardless of shooting ranges, we have, uh, damaged equipment across, uh, all of our utility, uh, stray bullets flying all the time.
All the time.
Doesn't, doesn't matter if it's solar panels or substations, uh. I mean, yeah, the panel itself won't, but the entire project will, yeah, unless they, unless they.
Yeah.
Unless they take out the, the transformer on the substation, then that's a different question.
Right.
But, um, we have had stray bullets. Elsewhere as well, take out individual panels.
Sure, it's costly.
Yeah.
Well, these are all things that have to be thought about.
Right.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, that's, that's gonna be a part of our process too, is reaching out to the state for that, um, so I appreciate Keith and. Um, bringing it up, so, I mean, that's, that's on us to coordinate that with them.
Yep.
So we've started.
And it's good to hear with, with Keith and Gina's neighbors that they don't have a problem with the solar project, so that's good. Yeah.
And we're, they're not about houses in the area there.
Right.
It's bottom ground.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we would like to work with.
Only right in ordinance we gotta think about down the road, not just necessarily.
Right.
It could be the.
Right, future project.
Won't affect it if there's no houses, so.
Yeah.
That's the thing, if we gotta gain community next to it's already, you gotta have government.
Gained community.
Pretty high society, I think, the governor's society, yeah. Well, so we've got several, we know the, the main things we talked about are different. Things need addressed, that are the, the things that we could change numbers on.
You wanna go through the first few pages of it, like we did before and.
Yeah, just highlight.
Kind of look at them.
Yeah, so. Printed several, might look at some more, next week, let's talk about it again, let's keep working on it till we get something hammered out.
Alright, yeah, if you guys have any questions.
We can reach out to you if we.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of folks will have questions on like the operations side of it as well, um, you know, the ongoing maintenance of it, the amount of traffic, personnel, people that'll be working on it. Um, that.
Do you have, uh, staff that has to be close by, or are those pretty much remotely?
I would have to check on this project to see, I guess, where the nearest, uh. The nearest, um, sorry, work center is.
Yeah.
For Mid American. Um, we've usually been, so like for our solar projects, uh, the one up in. Webster County, we've been able to, uh, utilize, we have a wind farm up there as well, so we've been able to utilize, um, staff, just house them in the same place. And just disperse them out from there, I'm not sure where the nearest service center is down here.
Yeah, where are you from, Will?
I'm from the Urbandale office in Des Moines. Yeah, we have folks, I think our closest one is the, the Arbor Hill project up in Adair, so that might be a little bit of a haul. I'm not sure what the staffing would look like. Right, and I'm, like I said, but these things also don't require much maintenance. Quite honestly, the, the largest maintenance, uh, costs that we have is the associated mowing with it. Um, especially with a pollinator program in the first three to five years, trying to get that established, because you can't be spraying it. So it just takes a while to establish it, that's where a lot of the cost comes from, we usually contract that out too, so it'd be. Contractors on site doing the mowing for that kind of stuff, we had supervisors on site, monitor range, make sure everything's good. But the actual maintenance of the facility itself, the assets in place, it's really minimal.
There is a utility pair, pair most days, but that's the guest.
That's right, it won't be us. Yeah, feel free to reach out to questions, um, we're here to help.
Alright.
We can do that.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
Go forward, so we'll start working on more next week, print, I gotta binder set aside for it here, so.
We need to discuss our meetings too, when we get to that.
Okay, alright, well then, let's see, where are we at? Uh, solar orders. Alright, we have number eleven there, is the courthouse grounds for Spirit on the Square, tree lighting ceremony, we're getting this done early. They, they applied for this, so.
Got two applications.
Got two, we have two applications, one for that, one for. Uh, multiple things. Friday after Thanksgiving, uh, to have things lit, so, you see the two applications that we have, need a motion to give those two.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve. Uh, the use of the courthouse grounds for the spirit of the square, tree lighting.
Okay, and then what's that, that would also be.
Could just do both of them all, just do both of them all, both of them, yeah.
So for decorating and.
Decorating and tree lighting.
Yep.
From Friday after Thanksgiving to New Year's.
The two applications.
I'll second that.
Alright, the motion is second, you have a discussion on that? Okay, we'll vote on that.
Mayor.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
Okay, just sign those applications. Uh, we're to conservation. Uh, budget and wages. I'm not totally aware of what's going on with this, so. What do we have?
I think.
I'm not sure why I'm here.
Yeah, I, I didn't put this on here, I'm trying to forget.
I put it on.
Yep.
Um, because I had a phone call, um, asking about this, and, and normally, we, we didn't. We don't usually change wages in the middle of the year. Um, and John, you sent an email, um, talking about. That you have the authority to do that. Um, however, the code of Iowa says with the approval of your board, so, you know.
That, which.
That you, that you do this, uh, that you can change with the approval of your board.
Yes, which my board gave me approval when I was hired to cover all of the seasonals.
Okay.
Their wages and everything.
But it, it just, um, I, the reasoning you did this was because you've got a lot of extra money.
We have, we do have money left over in this budget because we weren't able to fill all of our positions last year.
Okay.
We were selling this from short, um, we also had numerous times, um, when it was like a hundred and some odd degrees outside, I made my guys go home at one o'clock. Um, when we budget for, like our seasonal line item, that's for perfect conditions, and we can fill all of our. All of our positions, and they can work the thirty-five hours a week. Uh, that's what we budget for, because that's best case scenario.
Okay.
Um, so that's why, that's why there is money left over, because we were an entire position short last year that we couldn't fill.
And, and he works the, he's permanent part-time.
Correct. Correct.
And works thirty-five hours a week.
He worked from uh the camping season, which depending.
It through, yeah.
Yeah, and then in the winter he goes down to twelve, cause then that keeps him under the, the full-time cap.
Okay. And you wanna raise him a dollar?
Correct.
Talking about fourteen to fifteen dollars an hour for being the, yeah.
And then.
Correct.
Then the other one from ten dollars to thirteen dollars?
Yes, cause his, his ten dollar, he's um, he was actually through the internship program through the high school.
Okay, and he didn't get paid for that, right?
He did get, but we, we have been paying our interns, yes.
Okay.
Because they.
Normally you don't do, you don't pay the intern.
We just, we, oh, no, no, I know, I know. And, and I mean, and my board, myself have discussed this, um. Our interns has the best way. Our intern program is very hands-on. Um, they're out there working for us. Uh, they go through, we pay for them to go through the county physical, the drug test and everything. So our interns are treated like seasonal employees.
Yeah.
Um, I went to bump him up to thirteen because he is no longer doing just the intern hours, um, cause his intern hours end at three. But then he stays until four thirty-five o'clock, sometimes helping us. So he's being treated as basically a, a full-time, or you know, a full seasonal.
He's still in school.
Correct, yeah.
So is he gonna be working thirty-five hours this summer?
No, no, he's actually, he's finished um pretty much when school stops.
Oh, okay. So this is just a temporary thing?
Yeah, he's, I think it's like the middle of May. Yeah, he's done. It's just, he's gonna, he's gonna jump in with our seasonals once everything starts, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but he'll go in with the seasonals. Okay, so when, when he goes in with the seasonals, what's the hourly rate on that?
He's, he's gonna be at the thirteen.
He's gonna be at thirteen. Is that what all of them are?
Uh, they're between twelve seventy-five and thirteen seventy-five. Um, our brand new people would be at twelve seventy-five.
Okay.
Um, and then it kinda goes, so yeah, we just gave him that raise to keep him. He'll be basically at the same rate as the other seasonals.
Okay.
But to this, to this, as far as you have the money, your board's backed you in this.
Yes.
So we're.
Okay.
Your board approved this, so I don't.
I just wanted to clarify it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And there was, um, and I know the auditor's office pointed out, um, cause when we had the discussion with the supervisors, um, our budget presentation for twenty twenty-two, when they approved the permanent part-time. Um, we were told, at that time, the supervisors told me, if we keep him under the full-time hours, we don't have to offer him any benefits. That was the whole point, cause we couldn't afford to be full-time. But then the auditor's office pointed out that if he stays on all year, regardless of what his hours is part-time, that we have to offer and leave. And I think that's what a lot of this started as, cause I didn't, I didn't even know that.
Okay. So you're saying the one that's hired, works all year round, but jumps from thirty-five to twelve?
Correct.
You have to, you have to offer?
That was the initial, when, when this first started, when I
Okay.
Did the thing they were like.
Oh, you need to double check all that.
Yeah, cause we, as far as I was concerned, it was, he's under that full-time cap, you know, that's it, so.
Okay, well, we need to check that out.
If you figure this, I mean, so if you wade through those things, if you can't, I mean, you need, lady can tell you what the deal is, you can do that, have communication line. Are you having success with communicating with the auditor's office, getting responses?
No.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So.
What do you mean?
The auditor's office needs to respond when people have an issue. The auditor needs to respond.
I, I know initially when I, give you a timeline, what happened, I submitted the, you know, with our normal bills, what claims, whatever, um, the sheets to increase their wages. Um, then I received an email from the auditor's office, you know, saying, hey, we need your board approval. And then, you know, that was the email where, you know, I don't have to have my board approval for seasonals. Um, I tried to call the auditor's office again and ask them, okay, what's going on? Um, I was directed to talk to Melissa. I left numerous messages for Melissa and haven't heard anything.
Melissa's been out helping Fremont.
Well, I, I know she, I know. I, I was just, yeah, cause I, I kinda came in here tonight, like, okay, all of a sudden I'm on agenda and I know.
This is not isolated. I have tried numerous times over the years that you hit brick walls in auditor's office whenever they don't wanna give you an answer on.
But it tripped a trigger when it, when it changed this, that's what
But.
The designation of the employee, whatever it is.
Especially if they go into a meeting tonight, I can understand them saying, hey, what's going on? But when we go into a meeting tonight, these numerous times tried to contact, there is a minute to call back, figure out something before we talk about this. They need to respond. So, I mean, that's like we need to respond, so.
I've got an email where they, they've responded, so, yeah.
But if you, I would like to know, if, if you don't get help, if they won't, if the auditor will not respond to you and help you, let me know. Let's make that public. So, anyway.
I don't believe that's its case.
Well, we just heard it right here, so need to have a response.
The other question I have, John, is, I was reading your board minutes from um January, I think, where um there was a, a layout for a roadside park at the Essie Davison Farm. What is that? I think Jane presented it. My question is, what is this? I've never, I've not heard of this before.
No, we had just, um, no, Jane had brought it up, just brainstorming. Uh, pretty much it was brainstorming for a project with uh like where the prison's gonna be built and everything, like the old county farm, if, you know, if there would be, became an opportunity, and Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, on all this. Um, if there would be an opportunity for like a roadside park, would it be something we would be, it was just, it was a brainstorm session on, they could be.
So it's not a, I mean, I would rather have you fix the road and not away than.
Oh, no, yeah, no, it's just, yeah, we were just, we were kinda brainstorming.
Okay.
Different ideas.
Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna get an answer on this? I guess your board's giving you permissions to go for it. You've got the money to budget. I mean, we're just clarifying things.
I think, I think to clarify things, it probably just needs to be in your board minutes that the board has approved this. Um, you know, that you brought it up and, and their approval is to do it. And that, I mean, that's what was always required in the past. So I think that's a good idea to continue with that.
And we also just uh speak with my board members one-on-one today, cause I've been out of the county. Um, our next board meeting, cause we realize that there's been a lot of okay, let's make a motion, the director has this authority, this, we're gonna review our bylaws and just get everything together and just put everything in the bylaws.
Well, and if it's, if it's like two years back, then the auditor's office isn't gonna know that.
Right.
Though I think it, whenever you do a payroll change notice, you know, it just needs to say that you've gotten board approval and whatever. That just, it just keeps things clean.
Yeah.
So.
Good. Alright, everything clarified then? Done, you're good? Alright, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Alright. Next step, we have board communication.
I had a Bonsi meeting Tuesday. Um, we're discussing the, we had Director Garcia come and talk to us when, yeah, in Des Moines at a supervisor meeting and that was interesting. And so we discussed how that's gonna affect the mental health centers and nobody is quite sure what's going on. I see she's coming again to ISAC, so.
Yeah, I saw that.
Um, anyway, that was an interesting thing, but things are going well, except the, the um contracts that the state has with some of the companies that is supposed to pay the mental health centers for their work. Um, it's not coming through. I mean, they owe huge amounts of, of, of money to the mental health centers. It's just not getting done, so that's something that they're working on.
Okay, anything else, John?
Yeah, I, I didn't have anything this week. I, Saturday I went to the legislative coffee.
Oh, I did.
In Shenandoah. That was good. Interesting as always.
Yeah, it kinda died down. I went to the one over here. The AEA's died down a little bit, but the libraries, they keep.
Yeah, the libraries were talked about a lot and.
Yeah.
And, but the AEA stuff had kinda died down. They didn't wanna spend the whole time talking about it, so they, um, but it still came up. It was still on everybody's mind.
Anything else?
Um, just, next, next week our meeting will be at nine o'clock on Thursday, right?
Next, yeah, next.
And then the two weeks after that, they'll be on Tuesday mornings.
Yes.
Because of the elections that have to be the first tier canvas and the second tier canvas. Melissa sent an email out a week or two ago on that, so it's on the twelfth and the nineteenth.
Okay.
That we have to do those on Tuesday mornings.
So the, oh, I'm looking at the wrong month.
Yeah. So I just kinda wanted to get ahead.
Yeah, the twelfth will be, I mean, we probably have to anyway, cause.
Because we're gonna be gone to ISAC then, yeah.
Rest of the week.
Are you going to ISAC, Jacob?
I think so. Let's see here, so that's the twelfth and nineteenth, and the twenty-eighth will be back normal.
Yeah.
Okay, melted on the calendar. Okay, anything else looking at here? Make sure I'm pronounced. We got a bunch of claims here.
I move that we approve the claims that have been presented. Second.
Motion on second. Hold on a second, on discussion, on the, 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 uh, I'd look through the, on the windows, the uh shades. Is that completely done? I'm trying to remember.
Do you know, Kristen? Okay.
Yeah, it was quite a bit. Like I said, it was a lot of money for the shade subject. Are they in all the offices everywhere? I see the one here, but and all the different ones?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm just curious about this finished. Okay, discussion on these claims? Everybody good? Hold on.
Mayor?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, let's see here. Too many papers here, I don't find a lot of papers. That's, I might not there. Actually, my printer was working, so I can do something.
You got one.
I got enough. Just took the took it down to recommendations, so we have a chance to look it down. Yes. So I'd make a motion to uh pass the amended minutes to meet Iowa Public Information Board guidelines. Hand it out.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hold on.
Mayor?
Yes.
Clark?
No.
Holmes?
Yes. Okay.
Kristen, there is one thing on here. Um, it's six thousand fifty, not sixty-five hundred. For the libraries. Six oh five oh.
That's what it's.
Oh, it's, but it says but in the first sentence, it says sixty-five. Yeah.
Okay.
The motion's correct.
Right.
The discussion, the discussion is wrong, the motion's correct.
Okay.
We struck out and amended minutes, we struck the discussion out, we're the correct. Okay. Uh, we got that done, so what's next here? We're done.
We adjourn.
We can adjourn, a motion adjourned.
I just so moved.
Todd made the motion?
Second.
Judy's second, all those in favor? Alright, we're adjourned. Thanks, John.